...a lot of areas is, you know, kind of a country residential road. And you do have some blind spots there. So if people continue to go the speed they're going now when we change the speed limit, that's one thing. But if the people that are driving five or 10 over suddenly continue to drive five or 10 over, and now the 85th percentile is going from 45 to 52, you know, that's another thing entirely. So I guess I'm concerned because we have to go on record as a council to say, let's increase these speed limits. And I think a number of us can look at a couple of these areas where we might not necessarily be entirely comfortable with the changes. Some areas make sense, some don't.
Your honor, if I may, I'd like to ask Chief Mayor if there's a time horizon to implement any of these changes should the governing body decide to do so, and once the resolution is passed, or if we have flexibility in that regard for educational purposes.
Mr. Chief?
Mayor, if I could answer the question in regard to the enforcement angle on this. And what we do is we have a time period, we have flexibility in regards to the enforcement. So when you think of the speed limits changing, there's typically the orange markers, like the flags that would be on the speed limit signs, to make sure there's the education that we educate people with it, there's a warning phase. We still have our traffic trailers, we would put those out there, there would be the education phase. So we would decide what a time period would be where it's logical based upon how we're seeing people comply. So in regards to actually stopping or waiting to put the signs up, I'd have to check into that unless Mr. Van Detten knows. I don't know what flexibility we would have in that area. Does that answer your question, Mr. Zerlag? Is that something we should report back on?
Well, I would think unless the attorney corrects me, that a resolution could be passed indicating a date in the future where we'd actually put the signs up. So I mean, we'd have the signs up, but have a date in the future where we'd start enforcing them that would take care of the educational component, like say maybe 30 days.
Okay, I, yes, please.
There are a number of streets that are going to be studied in the spring, and so this is not, this is not the total package right here. So those streets will probably be coming to you in July or August. And I'm not sure if there is in fact a deadline. I would have to research that and get back to you. But my sense is that there is, there would be no downside to delaying this for 30 days, even 60 days, if councils so choose to, chose to do that on these particular streets.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Slater.
Could you, could you educate me as to how this, this happens? I, a couple came to one of our community engagement meetings to talk about this, and I think I referred them the wrong way. So could you tell me how, could you educate me how, how this process gets to us?
Councilmember Slater, just a moment, please. Just for our viewers at home who, I did not announce what this is about major road speed limits. Square Lake Adams to De Quinder, Waddles Adams to Livernoy, Coolidge South City Limits to South Boulevard, Rochester Road, South City Limits to Stevenson. And this actually comes to keep in accordance with the law, so that we're required to review these speeds, isn't that so?
Yes, it's required by state law that any road that does not have a study done previously to establish the speed limit for that road must be studied. And the results of that study would indicate what the speed limit should be. And the city must approve that speed limit based on that study unless there is something material with the study that may be inappropriate, or should be changed, or should be looked at because of some extenuating circumstance. Absent any, any particular discrepancy or problem with the study, the city really has no choice but to establish those speed limits based on, on the study. And gone are those days where city councils can set the speed limit at whatever speed they might think is, is appropriate. It must by state law be set according to the traffic study that is done.
And we've read the report and seen that that did come through our traffic committee as well.
That is correct.
Uh, just, you're back. You're back. Councilmember Beltrameany.
I was, I was listening to all the education thing, and quite honestly, I think that the best education is the orange flags on the new signs.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I mean, I really do.
I think you're right.
But to that end, if, if we want to pass this and, and a date certain to put the signs up, if you will, could we coordinate that with Troy today, which would give us a lag time so that then it comes out as a, as a new piece of information in the next Troy today? Coordinate the date based on that and use the interim time for all other media? Just a thought.
Our attorney?
Madam Mayor, one of the concerns that I have as well is, you know, once it is approved, that is the new speed limit. And so, again, I don't think that there's a rush to, to get this passed, and certainly it's not an action item before you tonight. Certainly, we could probably coordinate that. I would prefer to have the education done before you take action on, on making these your, your new speed limits.
Mayor?
Councilmember Haralek.
Well, I, you know, I guess from the standpoint of education, I mean, I think if people drive slower than the speed limit, they're certainly within the, the law. And since we're increasing the speed limit, my concern was if, you know, just to give the public additional feedback options, if they felt that there was something that, that we were proposing in accordance with the law that they, that they felt was inappropriate. And I do believe that in certain areas on Waddles, there are blind spots. And my concern is that, you know, I, you know, that's one of my concerns. My other concern, and, you know, that the law only allows us to change the speed limit if we have too many crashes, which is kind of silly. But the other thing is that I'm not sure that, I'm not entirely, I don't, I guess my initial question when I asked, do we actually need to take action on this? Or is this something that can happen administrative? Because it seems kind of, you know, if we, if we had no choice in matter, it seems like there's really nothing for us to vote on.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
It, it does need to be a traffic order which is approved by-
Right. It's a traffic order, it's a policy issue. But you're right, there are many things that we vote on that we don't have a lot of choices. That's very true. Did you have one, another thing, Councilmember Beltrameany?
No, I, I'd like to see whatever's done, done before the summer, so the teenage drivers, we can also use the school system to help publicize this. That's my only concern.
In one moment, Mr. Manager. To Councilman Haralek's concern about a, I know of where he speaks, on Waddles Road, we do have signs which could indicate blind spot. You see this on South Boulevard where in fact signs go up. And that might be something that might want to come before the traffic committee, because I think that, that he's right. One wouldn't be zooming down there now at double-digit speeds without caution. Mr. Manager?
Just for clarity, the governing body wants city management to educate the public on increasing speed limit signs before you pass a resolution authorizing those speed limits to be increased?
I don't think so. I, I heard that from the table, but I, I don't think that that's, is going to happen. I do think however, Mr. Manager, I think that there needs to be a clear case made. I, I saw the backup information. The piece that was missing for me was in regards to how the timing on the traffic signals will change. Actually, residents have written emails many times on this particular suggestion, that it would change the drive times, that it would reduce gasoline consumption, some, some things that they had written before, and I think that is responsive. But, did you have another question?
No, I'm just, I-
No, I don't think that you would advertise council may soon change speeds. I think it would come before us.
Okay, so we'll come, we'll bring it before you, change the speed limits and educate the public, all in tandem, address the issue on Waddles Road.
Yes.
And progression as well for traffic signalization.
Or, or any other sites that may be considered. Do we want to keep our, obviously we want to keep all our residents safe. And Councilmember Haralek brought up a number of points, certainly pedestrians, certainly our cyclists, and certainly certain stretches of roads, particularly on Waddles, where it is, has more of that country feel, which we value. Anything else on the memos? Otherwise, we move on to council comments. Colleagues? Councilmembers Slater?
I was happy to see during public comment that somebody brought up the CMN-TV Town Hall meeting. Because one thing I've been trying to do is get it, some independent people to tell us whether we're doing a good job or not. And I know Mr. Savage thinks we wasted some money with the ICMA study, but I respectfully disagree because I think we got a lot of feedback about what we're doing and what we're gonna do. So, you know, when John Nixon, the new governor's man, says that Mr. Zerlag and Troy are in good shape because of what we've done, I think that's, that's a very nice comment. Congratulations, Mr. Zerlag. I would encourage everybody to, to take a look at that, because that's an independent review of our city. And that's what I'm paying attention to right now, independent reviews. So I just wanted to say that.
Councilmember McGuinness?
I had highlighted that as well, and I didn't know if there was additional information that we could provide to citizens or interested people that were not able to catch that, if there's a way for them to view that at a later date, or, or if it's going to be available in some other format that we can publicize here at city council meetings, because I know it was referred to tonight in public comment. It's also been referred to in the agenda under reports where we had some of the comments that were pulled out and placed in here in a written format. But I think it's important that if anyone's interested in viewing that, that that should be made available to them. And I also wanted to indicate that we've got our last week of public engagement sessions, and there are still several that are available this week. And those dates and times, they're during the day and during the evening. From my own personal perspective, I think that they've been very well attended. And I'm very anxious for us to get together and review the feedback. I didn't know if it would be appropriate to have a discussion about that. I know that it was referenced in here that when they are complete, and I believe that will be at the end of this week, that we are gonna reconvene, set a study session, and share our feedback. And that's something that I've been getting questions about as I've attended the public engagement sessions. Obviously, we've been attending one, which is a very daunting task, I have to say, or two at a time, and not because it's bad, but just because there are so many people that are interested, and they want to talk, and they want to be able to get feedback from you. So I've gotten, I've received several questions from people that attend in terms of how will we share that information with each other? And I want to make sure as a councilperson that I'm prepared to do that. And I don't know if we need to have a conversation as to whether that's going to be something written. I know some of us have been asking people that attend to take notes and provide them to us, so if we're not able to hear every second of every conversation going on at a table, we're still able to get that feedback. So if it's something we need to prepare in a written format, or if it's something that we can make sure that we have at a date certain so that we can share it with everyone else, I know that that's something that attendees are hopeful and anxious to see us do. So I wanted to bring that up so that we can all be prepared and all be on the same page. And I did want to call something out, and, and I know it might be a minor detail, I'm probably, I'm becoming famous for doing that with these reports, but it was noted that there was a meeting of Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I believe that the date listed here might actually be incorrect. It says September 23rd, but it appeared to be that they were minutes from February 17th. So I'm not sure if that's something that needs to be corrected. But I wanted to point out, not only was it a well-attended meeting, but I was really pleased to see that they were discussing some really pertinent issues of things that we're doing right now, discussing the ICMA report and the changes that are gonna be made to Parks and Rec. I think that this is a perfect example of what we would like and what we need our boards and committees to do, without really giving the direction, although it's part of what we expect them to do based on, on their bylaws. They've really taken things that are very pertinent and had discussions about what this means and how it will affect Parks and Rec. And hopefully, this would be an opportunity for them to disseminate information to the public or interest in citizens. So I just, I wanted to say thank you for doing that. And hopefully, as we kind of continue to restructure boards and committees and figure out how we're gonna best utilize them, this can be an example of what we would like them to do. Hopefully, you know, get to the point where we can even lean on them, and staff can gather information, because there are staff members that are in attendance at this meeting as well, to get feedback from the people that we've placed on these boards and committees, and then have it relayed back to us. So I just wanted to highlight that because sometimes I know that the details in the reports are not brought out to the public. And I think that's all I had.
That was a lot.
Sorry.
I would ask Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart, the question regarding the CMN, was it called a Town Hall, a CMN, which featured our own city manager, John Zerlag? How might someone view that?
It's called the CMN-TV Presents Michigan Town Hall State Budget Crisis. We have it on our channels 10, which is WOW, and 17 is Comcast. One o'clock on Mondays, two o'clock on Tuesdays, and eight o'clock on Tuesdays, Thursdays at 5:30, and weekends at three o'clock. And it's also on CMN's channel as well.
And how about available via the internet? Would they be able to get that from, on our website, or would they go to CMN to view it? Do you know?
You can view it on their website. We haven't put it on ours yet, but we will.
Okay, then that'll be available.
And our schedule of all our programs is online.
Okay, one more question, Councilmember?
That was my question.
Okay.
If these times were online for people to find on our website?
Yep, go to Community Affairs page, and our schedule every month is up there.
Other council comments?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Beltrameany?
I, I have a couple of items. One, I put at all of your places, this Quick Facts on the Census. I picked that up at the SEMCOG General Assembly when I was there last week. And it just gives us a really good way to look at how we compare with other communities. And if you look at how we compare with communities that we're constantly compared to in Oakland County, we fare fairly well. Our vacancy rate is lower than most of those. We've, we've gained 21 people who somehow are occupying 700 more households than they were in 1980. So I, I guess that tells us that our households are getting smaller. But those 21 people are spread very thin, or they're very wealthy. So I, I thought it was interesting. But, but when you look at this, our, our minority populations have expanded, and I think that's a good thing for us. But I, I was heartened to see particularly our vacancy rate be significantly lower than the counties by a third or so almost, and better than our competing communities. Also, SEMCOG is holding their dues steady, and they, they published their budget, and we passed it. But they also are talking about what it will take for communities to actually have economic prosperity, be desirable, have fiscally sustainable services, which is what we've been talking about for the last 18 months, reliable and quality infrastructure, which includes, yes, the potholes, and yes, the road condition, but it also includes the, the wireless and all of that other kinds of equipment that we need now in the 21st century. Attractive environmental assets, so it comes back to our parks and our medians. And access to service jobs, markets, and amenities, which our time with Automation Alley earlier this evening did show that while we'd like everybody to have a job, Troy is holding our own, and particularly in the areas of R&amp;D for high-tech sorts of units. So those were all heartening things. And again, those of you who don't want to pay $4 for gas, rideshare is alive and well at SEMCOG, and I say this, I think at least once annually, and they will get you home if you get a call from the school that says your child needs to be taken home. So even if you are in a rideshare program through SEMCOG, you can get home for emergencies, or get wherever you need to be. So that's an important piece. The second thing is, the spring update was in our packet for the budget, and I, and I guess I misunderstood. I thought that we had talked about the protocol for this being, it would be put in our packet, a study session to discuss it would be scheduled for that meeting, and then there would be a resolution to approve and validate this as councils updated three-year budget. So that did not happen, and I do think that council owns the budget. We need to own this update as well. So if my colleagues are prepared to pass it next week, then put a resolution on. If we need a study session, then put a study session on, but we must own this budget. So that's my piece.
Well, it's on tonight's agenda, so if, if, if there is information that, that we would like to talk about, we certainly still have time, it's 9:16. In terms of this revised budget, as it's, as it's listed, revised budget spring update, which we will be taking action on at the next meeting, correct, on resolution?
Our intent was to, and if there's a misunderstanding, my apologies, I thought you wanted to look at it one week and then-
I do.
And then act on it the following.
The, I think that, I would like to see in the resolution itself, part of the process, so that in accordance with council's wishes to actively revise the budget, that this will be set in. So I know we said it at a meeting one time, but that way, if it became a resolution, it would become our law, become our public policy. So is that, did-
My confusion in this, Mr. Manager, was that this was not in the K section-
Yeah.
-as an item for future council agendas. It was put in the section on reports and communications. So there was no expectation by anybody, if it goes in reports and communications, that we would act on it. So I, I expected to see it in the K section, or at a study session, but-
Mr. Manager?
Yes, that's correct. It should have been what we call a green item, if you will, and the cover letter would be green instead of white, indicating that we'd like you to act on this April 4th. But in, in terms of the, the resolution, and you can help us out on this.
Okay.
You know, we already have a balanced three-year budget, and we look at trends and we modify them, calibrate them accordingly to new data as it, as it comes in. You want to take a look essentially at the existing three-year budget, that's, that's balanced, that's balanced, and have us indicate how those trends have been modified, and then ask you to reinforce your earlier decision to adopt that budget, and-
I believe it was suggested and consensus was agreed at a study session, it was through Councilmember Beltrameany's observation, that it is certainly appropriate for managing management to bring forward an update. But it would, we believe, be in the best interest if we actively revised it. So as part of the resolution that will come before us next week, I would like to see, personally, something that said, whereas it is the desire of city council to, upon review of the updated budget, revise, and so on. That that piece becomes then the process, and wouldn't be lost with the election of four new members and 10 years of the remaining experience. So that is good oversight, and that should happen. And now that we are on a three-year rolling budget, it will happen more often than it ever has. So next week, we anticipate, next week?
Monday?
Yeah. We anticipate then a resolution to revise the budget, and it should include some of that new process language. Does that make sense?
It does, as well as the actual number changes.
Yes.
Okay.
Speaking of, Councilmember Beltrameany, anything more on that?
No, I'm-
Did that capture it? We did have a speaker, this is still on, this is very important information, incidentally, this three-year budget. And I do hope people read the revenue trends. We heard during public comments tonight, one of our residents reciting statistics about the changes in taxable value reductions. It says specifically based on real numbers, what the projected taxable value reductions have been and anticipate to be. And they are daunting. So it says the revised reductions are 8.5% for 1112 and 7.0% for 1213. Look at the cumulative drop in taxable value, and it is frightening. That is again coupled with the governor's direction in terms of revenue sharing, the county's direction in terms of abandonment of all of their roads. We are in a bigger picture than just a single view. And I think that came through also on other citizen comments tonight regarding the library. We had a number of comments that spoke specifically to this is much bigger than the library. A councilmember, Beltrameany, has observed before the impact that the changes in revenue sharing have had. If we had that revenue sharing, we would not be closing down the Troy Public Library at this time. And in addition to that, Councilmember McGuinness talked about the comments from our Park and Rec Board, soon to be called just the Rec Board, Recreation Board. And if we didn't realize the changes to many of our valued programs, like the former Park and Recreation, it is, it's very sad. It's very sad how many people will be gone. And the people who came tonight in the blue shirts who talked about programs like tax preparation for ARP, how can that go on? One way is again your suggestion, and that is using our volunteers in different ways. As part of the futures report, it was suggested that volunteers, and again, this is up to volunteers, it's hard to get consistent hours from volunteers, but who could in fact staff the phones to take the request for appointments and do things like that. And that's where we're in desperate need of volunteers in a way that's entirely different than our old board and committee setup, that there is a recognized need that we will not be able to pay staff for any longer. And some of those things come up in the minutes that you referred to. Anything more on, Councilmember?
Two things. One, since, since we brought up the revised budget, and we're talking about process, I, is it the, is it, is it our desire to not make amendments to the current year's budget, but to only back two years in the three-year budget? Because I don't see the updates in the current year, and it doesn't sound like we're doing any sort of a, a budget amendment for anything other than 2012 and 2013.
Thank you. I think that it became, and again, Councilmember Beltrameany, when you were gone, Councilmember Haralek really did point out a loose end. And that was, while things seemed to be going in a certain way, we had not taken any actions specifically on the way dollars were being moved around. And, and that's an oversight, and we need to do that. So in recognition of that, this resolution will come before us next week. Meanwhile, two weeks later, we will be sitting in budget-building sessions in, in going forward. But this is really a catch-up piece that we should have done in the winter, when the winter update came before us. And yet it was in December, and it just, I believe, slipped by. We need to take action on it, I think she's right.
And Mayor, I guess my point is that I would prefer that if we're going to update the three-year document, that we incorporate updates to all three years and, right, but the, the adjustments, I don't, perhaps I'm mistaken, but previous discussions at the February the 28th council meeting, and also the November update, in addition to references in, in this, have mentioned changes to the current year, but they haven't been incorporated. And of course, that's a whole nother resolution as well. It has to be- It has to be more formal, because it's updating something that is set in charter and statute as opposed to the two-year, which is more informal.
So that will have to be well thought up by staff, and perhaps that'll be part of your upcoming meeting in preparation for the next.
John and I will take a look at this. Absolutely.
And one further item I wanted to bring up, and I think that, you know, since it has been in the public domain, I think that this council owes the public at least a recognition of its existence. And so I'll just get to the item. And that is, looking at the memo from the city manager's office and the city attorney and the assistant city manager dated February 16, 2011, item number one in H1. And it mentions that this city council has the authority to levy a mill for the library operations. And essentially, we don't have to wait until November, but this city council has the ability to levy some sort of a mill dedicated to the library. And so I think that, you know, if there's an inclination on the city council to have a mill levy for the library, it doesn't make any sense to close the library and then to open it up after an election. Or if you do believe that we should wait until November, then I believe that the city council should postpone the closure date until something after the November election. But as you know, I feel strongly that we can incorporate it into the current pie, if you will, of financing that's available. But my point is that if we, as a city council, meaning there are at least four of us up here that believe that the library should be maintained and should not be closed, then I think it's incumbent upon us to take care of that before it is closed, because of the disruption to the community, and also because of the waste of money. We're also talking about losing funds from the state and from Bloomfield Hills, who at least sends their people here, and we collect fees from that. So I think that we should at least discuss, if there's an intent of this city council to have a tax increase, whether or not we want to wait until November, or if we should do it now. And if we're going to keep the library open, why we want to wait until November to create that funding source.
Thank you. Of course, that one mill you're talking about is really for an independent library. It's not for the Troy Public Library. Okay.
And it certainly could be at the current location, but, you know, I think that we've all mentioned that we want the library to be maintained open. So I think if we can, if we're talking about the old, you know, trying to come to some sort of a consensus and building from that, if we can use that as a starting point and then build our funding around that, it doesn't make any sense for that thing to close. So I think that no matter how you want to fund the library, to close it and then reopen it is not a very good process to ever.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Mr. Manager? Earlier, Councilmember McGinnis brought up where we go after the community engagement period closes at the end of this month. That's the community conversations. And we had talked when setting those as not meetings, that they were truly listening sessions, and we'd have our opportunity to deliberate at a study session, where we could share all that information that's come before us. Will you be able to set that up for the coming month?
Absolutely. If you have your calendars, we can set it up now.
Well, the study session could be part of an agenda. I mean, it doesn't have to be a special meeting.
Okay.
It's just a study session.
Is it a study item?
Please.
Sure.
Okay. And then, any other study sessions? Okay. If there's nothing more, then we do have a closed session scheduled, so we could take a brief recess, and five minutes, say, and then we'll go to the next room. Thank you all for coming out tonight.